Good evening, everyone. I'm calling tonight's meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board to order. Today is July...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, 2025. It's 6:32. We are meeting at Falmouth Town Hall. My name is John Drewley, and I am the current Chair of the Planning Board. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone this is a public meeting. It is being conducted in accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Please take a moment to silence any mobile devices or electronics to avoid interruptions. Anyone wishing to speak tonight should come to the podium, wait to be recognized by the Chair, and state their name for the record before making remarks. We encourage respectful and constructive dialogue during public comment periods. Thank you. We will now proceed with the first item on the agenda, which is public comment. If anyone wishes to speak about something that is not on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name, and tell us what you'd like to share with us. Okay, no volunteers? Great. So, the first thing on the agenda is the minutes. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, Charlotte, I made those changes.
Okay.
So, motion to approve the July 8th, 2025 minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussions? Thank you for that, Charlotte. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So, we have two, the first two items on our agenda, other than the minutes. We have a covenant release request, and we have a public meeting. And I recuse myself from both of these meetings. So, I'm going to leave the room, and Pat is going to take over for the first two, and I'll come back for the third.
Thank you, Stone. Okay, the first one is a covenant release request for Lewis Lane, Lewis Street Sailaway Lane definitive subdivision plan of 11 lots. And I refer that to you, Jed.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman. So, included in your packet is a request from the developer of this subdivision, C-Salt Homes, requesting a full release of all 11 lots. There's estimates as required that they were sent over to the Engineering Division for their review. You also have Engineering Division's review of those estimates and their recommendation for the bond amount, as well as the most recent subdivision inspection report, which certified, or did not certify, but inspected the binder course and allowed it to proceed forward. So, with that, the Engineering Division recommended a bond amount of $392,576.79. That will take care of all of the items listed in the Engineering memo to include items such as (inaudible) public, survey work, erosion control, water main riser adjustments, looming and seeding, road and curbing, fence and guardrail, trees and landscaping, sidewalk, electric and gas utilities, actually, gas is not included, trenching, an entrance wall, monumentation, streetlights, and a street sign. So, all total 392,000 change. We recommend that you, considering where they're at in the process, we recommend that you allow the lot release, all 11 lots, in lieu of this bond and the amount as the Engineering Division has recommended.
And it can be done as a motion "in lieu of"?
Yes.
Okay, so all in one. So, I, we need a motion to that effect, that the Planning Board agrees to release the covenant at the Lewis Street Sailaway Lane definitive subdivision plan of 11 lots in lieu of an estimated 392,577, I'm going to round that up, bond to allow this contingency, to allow the release of the covenant. So, may I have a motion to that effect?
So...
Okay, I need a second now.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye, so all six of us, okay.
And for the record, Madam Vice Chair, we will reach out to the applicant to get all the documentation necessary so that they can record it at the Registry of Deeds. That will happen tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now, we are continuing the public meeting. Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors on behalf of Zhao El Junkera, I believe it is, the preliminary subdivision plan application to construct a five-lot planned residential development, PRD subdivision at 428 Carriage Shop Road. And I believe we had some comments and questions that had to be answered on this one before we would move forward. And so, for the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, Tim Santos from Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, representing the applicant. So, we were before you, I believe, two weeks ago, just to give you a quick reminder, the property is located at 428 Carriage Shop Road. Showing on my nice little screenshot here from the town GIS site in between Hayway and Cross Winds Way. So, it's this green parcel right here. It's 8.9 acres vacant lot. So, let me just get to the correct one. So, two weeks ago, we came before you proposing a five-lot planned residential development. There were some questions and comments that were brought up, and we've done some due diligence and met with the Deputy Director Chuck Martinson from Natural Resources in regard to the open space, just to explain some of that to you. Jed was there as well with us. So, Mr. Martinson was supportive of this project, and if it were to move forward to a definitive stage, he will issue his referral. We talked about the open space being in the back of about 4.5 acres. It basically connects to close to 60 acres along the Alexander Booker Road parcel. There's a four-acre parcel right here that's a triangle, and then further to the west is another 54, 56-acre parcel. So, it's about 60 acres of open space to the west of this that this four-and-a-half-acre parcel would connect to. We did discuss fencing, because fencing came up. He said he did not have an issue with fencing if we wanted to propose fencing, or if the Board wanted to condition some fencing. The only condition he would put in there would be that it needed to be at least six inches minimum from the surface to the bottom of the fence along any property lines.
Let him present it, Jim, first.
No, but I thought we were going to see the regular subdivision first.
It's not there yet.
We're supposed to do that one first and then this, is the...
No, Jim, let him continue, please.
I'd be more than happy to start that way. I was just trying to answer some of the questions and then get into them.
I don't know. It's the way we always used to do it. This is a change, and I'm just confused.
Go ahead, Mr. Santos.
Would you like me to start?
It's up to Jed and the Chairman. I'm wrong.
Go ahead. You're prepared to do it in this manner? I don't want to confuse you or upset your applecart.
Okay, I just, I was trying to address the open space concerns and the fencing concerns from last time. So, basically, Natural Resources had no issues with that. So, at the last hearing, I did state that originally, when the applicant bought the property, the property was sold to him from a real estate agent and appraiser as a three-lot subdivision. So, this plan right here that's before you right now, that's been submitted to the town, is a three-lot conventional subdivision, minimum 45,000 square foot lots, 150-foot width, and this length of this road right here is 500, the maximum length, 500 feet. No waiver is required for this three-lot subdivision. So, when we originally met with the applicant and Jed, we were talking about potential waivers to the length of roads. So, we do have a five-lot subdivision that meets the size of the lots, the 150-foot width factor that's needed for development of homes, but we would need a waiver for the length of that road. So, when we discussed it with Jed, we felt it made more sense to come in with a planned residential subdivision, which is the plan that was presented to you last time, with the open space as a benefit to the town or an offset of that waiver. Again, the fire department has also issued a referral with no issues. Their main concern was the width of the road, 20 feet minimum, and then having the clear, I believe it's 13, 14 feet height of clear vertical distance. So, that's how it started. That's how we got to the plan that was before you last time. Some of the main concerns were the open space, fencing, just to bring to the Board's attention, access to this open space. There is access adjacent to Lot 1 in the front. There's access in between Lot 3 and 4, and there's also access at the end of the road adjacent to Lot 5. What we'd like to do is donate, the applicant would like to donate the open space to the town. Chuck said he would be in support of that. The town does not want it. Then it will remain in a homeowners association, deed restricted. There would be obviously no development allowed on this open space. So, anybody that has concerns that someone would try to come back in the future to develop the open space, it's just not possible. I believe those were the main concerns from last time, the open space, fencing. There were some other comments brought up about setbacks from the stables nearby to the proposed houses. Those would all have to be met in accordance with the Board of Health regulations, and if the project were to move forward on a definitive plan, we would have a preliminary lotting plan showing house locations, and we'd be able to show those setbacks as well. So...
Thank you.
Anyone has any questions? I'd be more than happy to address them.
Jed, did you all look into that with the Board of Health as to the 50-foot...
Yes.
...setback?
We did. And so, there are two components. There's the storage of manure within 50 feet of a dwelling, and then there's also the actual stabilizing or the pastoring of horses, things that cannot be within 50 feet of an existing dwelling. So, to the applicant's point, once we get to the definitive stage, you can see where the house might be located, and we can assure that that 50-foot setback is maintained.
And that was my concern, that it had been looked into, so you were aware of what it was.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And now, any questions or comments from the Board?
I think there was another concern that was raised two weeks ago at the hearing, and that was the use of this particular bylaw in order to increase the density on this particular site, that it was not foreseen, really. And I think what I said at the time was, that was clever. It is clever, but it still, it seems to me to be a misuse of that particular bylaw. It puts an added burden, this is an agricultural zone. It's, to one side, it's got a very strong agricultural use with animals still pastured there. To the other side, it's got a housing development. I think the lots there are actually bigger than one acre. They certainly, look at, I've driven around there now, and I think those people probably on either side did what they did with their lots with the expectation that on that piece of land, the town would abide by the bylaws at the time, and that would be a three-lot subdivision, three-lot use of that piece of land at most, so that the sense of openness and density would not be greater than three houses on that long, narrow lot. And it's just, Jim at the time, I don't know if he wants to repeat it or not, said this really is like new zoning, to take a new use with that, and yet, although you're abiding a couple of things, the town is very interested in getting more housing. That's a town issue, and we want to do that, and this Board usually supports it. So, there's that, and I understand that. And we usually try to support a person using his lot the way they want to, why mostly. And this is within the bylaw, except for that 500-foot driveway or road that you're trying to put in, the subdivision road. So, it's like catching you on a technicality. But I think we should better look at, as a Board, the use of this particular bylaw to increase the density on a long, narrow lot. It's such a clever idea. I'm sure it would be copied frequently, and suddenly, an agricultural land, we're going to have much greater density than any of the other owners expected. And maybe I shouldn't do this, but I try to apply that to me at my house, and I think of, you know, fury. I, it's just, I'm not sure that we should allow that. I, I'm sorry.
Bob?
Yeah, I can't support this at all. My reasons are, it doesn't fit with the LCP, which targets development in village centers with sewer service, access to transportation, schools, and other services. The LCP strives to preserve potential farmland resources. We talked about that as being part of a resilient community. You're adding nitrogen to this area as well. I don't think adding market rate housing is a benefit to the town. We have enough market rate housing. It only increases the cost of every other housing that we have in Falmouth. It's not keeping with Falmouth's farming heritage. And this, the overdevelopment of Falmouth has got me really concerned, so I started looking up other places where this has been a concern. And I found in Vermont, in 1970, they created the Vermont 250 Act, and it has a list of criteria for development, which some of them are, that development will not result in undue water or air pollution, has sufficient water available for the needs of subdivision or development, will not unreasonably burden any existing water supply, will not cause unreasonable soil erosion, or affect the capacity of land to hold water, will not cause unreasonably dangerous or congested conditions, will not create an unreasonable burden on the educational facilities, will not create an unreasonable burden on the municipality in providing governmental services, will not have an undue adverse effect on aesthetics, scenic beauty, historic sites, or natural areas, and will not imperil necessary wildlife habitat or endangered species, conforms with the Capability Development Plan, which includes impact that will have on growth of the town, region, primary agricultural soils, productive forest soils, earth resource sources, extraction of earth resources, energy conservation, private utility services, costs of scattered developments, public utility services, development affecting public investment in rural growth areas. It's just, to me, there's, this does not do much for the town of Falmouth, and I think as a town, we really need to start looking at how overdeveloped we are becoming, because overdevelopment has never benefited any area. It's just getting to be too much. I drive around town, I see all these big swaths of land being cleared and dead-end roads going in, and I know we need housing, but there are other ways of producing housing without all this clearcutting and big, huge developments that are going in everywhere. And we've got all this housing that's going in on Main Street. We've got 104 units on Main Street. We're probably looking at 40 or 50 more. Who knows what is going to happen out with Saxon, whether they're going to stick with 300 or go to 900. Those are big impacts. And Falmouth still is a resort community, and if we destroy that aspect of it, it's going to have a big impact on the quality of life here. And if you destroy the quality of life here, then what's the sense?
Jim?
I object to the process. I thought the bylaw says that they shall first submit the subdivision plan, and that's what I expected to see. And then, what we got into last week was discussion about the modified plan, which is the cart before the horse. We should have looked at the original subdivision plan, and I believe the bylaw says shall, not may. And I believe the bylaw says, on this, may do it this way. So, I'd object to the process. I think God took us on the wrong track, wasted a ton of time, got me confused as hell, and we got disagreements all over the place because we didn't follow the process. And today, when I brought it up, it got shut down right away. I believe if you read the bylaw, it says shall.
Thank you. Paul?
Read it.
I'm not sure I follow that, but I've gotten three plans here in the packet. One was the one we saw last time. One shows a three-unit development, which I don't know where that came from, and the revisions are on the screen. Couple of things. One I thought was interesting is, there appears to be access to the open space, which was not there last time. I think that's a great idea. The other one is a drainage easement, but it's not clear what the drainage easement is doing. The drainage needs to be maintained on the site, so I'm not sure what the drainage easement does up there, showing a, emptying into the neighbor's area. I don't think that's the intent, but that's what it appears to be. So, I have some issues like that that I'm concerned with. But I think the access to the open space, if that's what it is, is an improvement.
Tom?
Not really a comment. What was the, I just had a question. What was the setback of the corridor behind the homes again? I just couldn't read it on my map.
Are you talking about this open space right here, sir?
Yes.
It's 20 feet?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Charlotte?
I need some instruction. I thought that we were looking at a subdivision plan last week when we looked at what we were presented two weeks ago and what we were presented with, that this is the subdivision plan, but you, it's not? This is not the subdivision plan?
That what Jim is saying, and he's correct, we should have had the one that is showing the three lots on here that could be divided under the current bylaws.
I don't understand why we should have, I don't understand.
Obviously, I've been told I'm wrong. Jed, why don't you read the bylaw so we can get this straight?
So, for the record, there is conflicting language between the bylaw, the zoning bylaw itself for planned residential development, and your regulations when it comes to planned residential development preliminary plans. So, in the bylaw, it does say that you need to compare it to a standard grid subdivision. The preliminary plan filing requirements for your, in your regulations, do not say that. It simply says, submit a preliminary plan, have a conversation with the Board. So, the role of the Board tonight, and Charlotte, to address your question directly, is you are looking at and trying to give advice to the applicant on whether or not you would be comfortable with them submitting a planned residential development as presented. You're comparing that to what you could normally get under normal circumstances.
So, it's this to that?
The three versus the five. Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And the five is only doable in this circumstance if you're open to granting a waiver on the road length. If you're not, then all of, then the whole plan is dimmed, because it has to maintain that 500 feet. So, it's really a decision of whether or not you want to advise the applicant to continue moving forward with a PRD, at which time, in a definitive system, they would submit the grid subdivision, you'd have the same conversation. Or you would recommend to them, look, we're more comfortable with just a three-lot subdivision.
For whatever reason.
Really, the stage that you're at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I like, down here, I'm having problems with the whole concept of this. Because...
What?
Pardon?
You're having problems with what?
I'm having problems with this whole concept of trying to get more lots out of it...
Yeah.
And donating land and all of that. It is farmland out there. People do have animals out there. If they were going to subdivide it, I think I'd rather go with the three lots and keep the shorter roadway. That's what I think. And I think we have given longer roadways before where we very probably shouldn't have, but we have done it. So, there is precedence, even some fairly recent precedence. So...
Madam Vice Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
So, I made some copies of PRD subdivisions that have been made, that have been approved in the past, all of which have roadways that exceed 500 feet. These are just 12 copies. Each take one of them. But those are just examples. Has the Board requested at the last meeting?
And that will help us.
To give us examples, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That will help us in our determinations. I think, I know it's going to help me.
True. And it's a variety of different scenarios. A lot of them, as you know, with PRDs, they're supposed to, an applicant is supposed to set aside at least 50% of the property as open space, so that clearly affects the size of the lots that they would create for development. But as you can see in some of these examples, you've got road lengths of anywhere between 1,000, sometimes they're 600 feet. There's a range.
Mm-hmm.
And the dates vary. I mean, there's some in the 80s, there's some in the 90s. I think the most recent one was the, the 2000, I think?
It wasn't too long ago.
Wasn't too long ago, yeah. So, it just gives you a sense for what's been done in the past.
And I really do appreciate this, and Jim, I appreciate your asking for this, because it gives us a better idea of what has been done in the past. And the question then still remains open, just because it was done in the past, do we want to continue it? Or do we want to draw a line in the sand here and say, no, no more? So, and that's part of our discussion thing, I think, our deliberation. But that's my point.
Can I take a little comment?
Yeah, of course.
Let's put the process behind and talk, now we're jumping ahead, and we'll have the discussion. I'm ready to enter into that. For all my years in the Board, I was always told by planners that it wasn't arbitrary about the 500 feet, that that was the rule. And Jed is the first one that actually said that we had discretion, and I didn't know that, for many, many times that I voted and brought it up. I always thought it was kind of silly, and because if the fire department says it's safe, it's okay, and it all turns out this comes back from a fire chief from 20 years ago who had this attitude, and we were voting on these things because he came in and said, we made people put in these roads and gates and knockboxes and all different kinds of Herculean efforts to build longer streets, because I thought we had to. And then Jed explained to me, no, it says, we have the option to do it, and if the fire chief thinks it's safe, that was my only objection to the short street. I have no objection to the short street, but I really thought we had to. I was misled by our planners. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is, I understand we have to be more flexible. If we continue to just shut down housing developments, we're going to get 40Bs everywhere, and there's going to be a hell of a lot more houses than five or six. And I think the state is trying to tell us that we have to look at smaller lot alternatives, and we have to find ways to do it. And even though that we may think it may change our town, the state's going to change our town with all the ADUs. In fact, if we, this thing could have six houses on it, they have three lots and three ADUs in the backyard, because they'll all fit perfectly. I mean, that's what, that's what the state's telling us to do. So, I think we've got to keep an open mind about finding a way to make the zoning work and get greater density. I know we all don't like it, but I think if we shut it down and say, we don't want to change it, we're going to get in trouble, because we've got to create housing. And I just wanted, I know I got off on the wrong track in the process, but I was thoroughly confused by what we were doing last week when I saw this plan fill up, and I didn't understand it. And now, I see, we said, well, it was assumed that we would approve that, but I just thought, because these plans also, I can't read it, but I usually talk about, you know, the wildlife corridors and everything's all set. All those items could have been cleared up with the preliminary plan and not become part of the discussion of the second one. I think we really got off on the wrong track by jumping the gun and not doing the discussion on the first process. So, I encourage us to do that next time, but I also think we should think long and hard about creating density, because if the owners, this is going to be a 40B with a lot more than four or five houses on it. That's my opinion.
What never gets taken into account is the sustainability of the piece of sand we're on. I mean, are we just going to turn it into a giant litter box? I mean, really? I mean, at what point does it become overburdened and overdeveloped so that you can't live here, because you're not going to have potable water, because you're pumping your sewage back into it, or you're polluting the ponds and streams? At what point? I don't know. It just...
Charlotte?
I don't feel that we're threatened with a 40B. I think if the, if the developer had been considering a 40B, he was looking at, he's now going to have to have 25% affordable, and he didn't want to do that. He really wants to have market rate houses there. So, I don't think, and even if we felt somewhere in his back pocket we're threatening with a 40B, I don't think that should really change our thinking. a 40B, I don't think that should really change our thinking on this use of this particular bylaw. Commenting on these prior examples, times when we've overlooked the 500 foot. One of the examples given to us is a single loaded road on one side. The rest of them are very big, open lots, and they're double loaded roads, which is much more standard for any kind of development. So it's not, they're not really comparable uses to what we're looking at right now. Third point on going by precedence. Not every precedent is a good precedent to follow in each instance. So we don't need to be controlled by them. I do think that we need to think about them and see if they're applicable to this particular instance. When what this board is really asked to do is to consider the character of the town, the long-term sustainability of the town, the abutters who are affected by every development that comes in around them, the people who are already there, and the new people who are trying to be there. And I think the fairest thing we could do to all concern is to stick with the original plan for that land, which is no more than three houses.
Thank you, Charlotte. Any more comments from the board? Okay. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? Do you have anything that you want to bring up? Please, sir.
Yeah, Ron Purdy, Monek's Madness, we own 416, which is the property that borders the whole length. My concerns haven't changed. I've looked at the numbers and the way this is written with the property lines, they could build a really big house on these properties and meet the standards. And this is a 25-foot setback, and then they're saying 10 feet from that line. No, the 25 feet apparently is in code somewhere that where, that's where the lots would actually start. And then they're saying 10 foot from there, that's 35 feet from our horses. The code still says, the Board of Health still says 50 feet. The very least, they should be moving that back to the 50 feet. I'm also not sure how they're, these lots are really small for this zoning. It seems like it would require not just a road change, but a zoning change to allow these small lots on this piece of property. And then I'm still concerned about the fencing. I would like, if we did go along with it, we'd like to see significant fencing along those four houses that are so close. I'm not worried about the big, lot five is probably not going to be an issue. But those four could be really, really close to some fast, heavy animals. That's my comments.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Manyadis. I am a resident and I own 437 Carriage Shop Road, so I am an abutter on the main drag, so to say. My main concern is I have young children, and so I didn't know if there was a traffic study done for the increase in density like you brought up, because one of my concerns is speed is definitely a factor on that road. There are not a lot of large neighborhoods that kind of dump into Carriage Shop Road in that section, especially where it meets Hayway at the end near the Holy Ghost Society. So that would be my main concern. We have a fenced-in backyard. We don't let our kids run in the front yard, but we do often, you know, play basketball in the driveway, and that'd be my main concern for the increase in density. I'm a big proponent of subdevelopment going in there. You know, it's good for the neighborhood, good for home values. I'm not sure if the five homes kind of meets that threshold being agricultural. I don't know if maybe a compromise could be made with four in between the original intent of the land and what the developer is proposing, but no, we want to be good neighbors, you know, we want, you know, land to be sold and people to make money on it. But I think there could be a compromise that could be made on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Amy Bickers. I made copies for you guys. You don't ask for them.
Thank you.
And I'll mention what I'm talking about when I was there. So quickly, what Mike just said, I was, that was in my head, if there was some sort of a compromise instead of five to four, because I'm an abutter, I'm on the opposite side. I do appreciate the conservation, open space part of it. What I was worried about is the open space and then it being developed in six months. I did speak with him earlier today, I'm sorry, I don't know his name. Well, I did speak with him earlier today, and he said that he would put a deed, a solid deed restriction on it, so it could not be developed. So it would be in perpetuity, it would be secured. That I definitely support because that would guarantee that that back section, the over four acres, is conservation, it is open space, it is for the animals. In my head, just because I'm in the woods all the time, I know and appreciate the animals that come through there, because when they come through my farm, they go right through there. That's where they're, that's their path. So the idea of having another house, you know, if there were just three houses and there's one house right back there, that is the line of path where the animals cross. So that's going to divert them somewhere else. I do like the idea of pushing all of the stuff together as far as the houses, but instead of five, having four, closer density and be able to have that open space. I mean, I really do appreciate that. But at the same time, you know, it is frustrating because I moved there because there's, there are no big lights. It is rural, it is agricultural. I don't want a subdivision in my backyard. Like, that's not, that's not why I moved there. I don't think that's why anybody moved there. But I do appreciate you guys listening and considering all of the different factors and just trying to weigh and balance. This is a hard one. But, yeah, all the water, it's going to go right into the pond and right into everybody's yards. I've seen that with neighbors in other areas where the big house was built that was the 4,000 square foot, which can no longer accommodate the water, and now the neighbors' basements are flooding. And I get those calls constantly where, you know, that was the house was allowed. Sandpiper Circle is a good one. I just had that one. After the last big rainstorm, the neighbor's house can't accommodate the rainwater into the ground, and the neighbor's basement flooded. And there's no way to prove that, but it's, now that it's happening every time it rains, it's like, huh, there's kind of a causality there. So trying to factor that in. But I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Lewicki. I reside at 26 Cross Winds Way. I too bought the property several years back in 2018. And the purpose was, because it was rural, agricultural, and I had a couple of horses that I wanted to put on my property, and to me, it was the perfect place. Now, some here already know that my property is for sale now, but I am hoping that someone who also wants a rural agricultural area for a couple of horses will look at it and say, this is perfect, because that's exactly the way I looked at it when I bought this place. And to turn it into, well, we're on the edge of a bigger neighborhood now, you're destroying the whole atmosphere in that area, where it was important that it be agricultural. And I support my neighbors back there with the horses. They have been very good, and I too support my other neighbor because just last night we had a coyote come down the driveway. And, you know, well, coyotes can be dangerous, but the point is, there's a lot of wildlife in the area. I see them all the time. And that all is going to be destroyed if you put in five houses or more. Three, maybe, but no more than that if you have to put any in, because you're destroying the whole point of that area and why people wanted to live there. Thank you.
Okay. Board, anything else? Okay. Mr. Santos, do you wish to make any other comments?
I just want to remind the board that this isn't like a modification of zoning. There is a, the lots meet the zoning. What we're requesting is just a waiver. It says in there 500 feet or at the discretion of the board, I don't have the correct terminology, Jed could read it for you, but it says, or if the board feels it's beneficial to the town, they could waive that length. That's what we're asking for. So they're, we're not asking to modify zoning in any way. It's written in there. Whether, other engineers haven't come in the past to request that waiver more recently than what Jed supplied you, but it is in there. That's what we're asking. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that it's not a modification to the zoning, it's, we're requesting a waiver for the length of the road. That's what this preliminary design was for.
Okay. Now, board, we have tonight being our last meeting, so on this issue, so we'd have to request an extension or we'd have to vote on it tonight as to whether we want to allow the preliminary subdivision plan.
I would, if I may, I would suggest that you do continue or at least have a discussion tonight about how you would like the applicant to proceed, because we don't have a decision drafted for you at this point. Keep in mind that your preliminary plan, and I'll use the air quotes, it's an approval, right? That's the official term that you give, but it is not in any way approving the final version of a subdivision plan in, on this property. It's simply just giving them the ability to move forward into the next phase. So some of the things you may want to consider discussing amongst yourselves, and you already have, is whether or not you would advise the applicant to pursue a PRD in a definitive plan application. But if you are steadfast and against that idea of more lots with a waiver of the road, it's important that you communicate that to the applicant so that they're not spending money creating plans that you ultimately won't be looking to approve. So those are the real questions for you tonight.
Charlotte?
I'd like to react to that. When we talked about this two weeks ago, one of the issues that was brought up is that the planning board is the only board that really is authorized to take a broad view of the proposal, to consider, this is in an agricultural zone, this is within a zoning thing, to think of all of the reasons each of these layers have been created. If we go through the door of saying, okay, this is only about a road waiver, you've opened the door to everything else, but then it goes to other places where they have a much narrower focus than we do. So I think it becomes our responsibility to make a decision here. Do we really think they should stick to the three house, which this law is supposed to be carrying in an agricultural zone, or by using a technicality, now open it up to more dense development? And I'm ready to make a decision now. I don't know that I would need to wait. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. But I don't think that saying, yes, they could go ahead, just, you know, you get the road, go ahead, see what other people think, they're not going to be looking at it the same way we are. They're not being asked to take a wide view about the greater good of the area or the town, or what agricultural zoning really meant, or what that restriction on that lot to three acre zoning, to the three house zoning really meant. We're it.
I have a question. I just want to make sure I understood. So if we grant the waiver, it's five homes. If we don't, it's three? Is that what it comes down to?
The waiver is about the length of the road.
Right, I know that, but if we don't grant it, it's, we're looking at three houses, right? That's it. Those are the two.
We're not extending the length of the road. That's a wow.
Just to make sure I understood. Okay.
Do you want to poll the board to see whether it is any point and, without doing a formal vote?
I'm for three.
Okay. Three. Jim?
I believe, at least I was told in the past from my experience as board, that the only reason why we have the 500 feet was a life safety issue required by the fire department. And now we're applying it to control the amount of lots, which I believed was never intended. I think we got off the wrong foot, and we're going in the wrong direction on this. I agree with them. It's a question of, the decisions be, life safety, is the 500-foot road safe? And the fire department says it's yes. And that's what, the only issue we're talking about. Everything else is allowed by zoning. And I think we're misusing it, and it's getting all misconstrued, and I think it's because the way we started this, it got everybody on the wrong track.
Bob?
Zero.
Charlotte?
Three.
Three. So five to six. Okay? We, should we take an official vote on that?
Well, I don't think you need to. I think the applicant heard you, that you're looking more of a three lot subdivision. And I just want to be clear that you're also not interested in the applicant pursuing a PRD, or is that still on the table? Would you like to see them preserve open space with a three lot subdivision? Or would you rather see, if, Tim, if you won't mind just pulling up the standard three lot subdivision? Would you rather see something in this configuration? That way the applicant's just clear on how to proceed.
I understand that. And I, looking at that, I would say if you're going to have the 500, this is me talking first, I don't usually do that. I would say if we're keeping it to the 500-foot roadway coming in, and we could get some set aside open space, that would really be a bonus. So that it would be a PRD.
Keep in mind, I don't know if that's even possible.
No, I don't either. I understand.
I just want to make sure that the applicant's aware of where you're landing.
But right now, since we don't have a decision, we really do, we're giving the sense of where the board is coming from. And so we'd really, I understand, you have a vacation plan, so you'd have to wait until August 26th to come back, but you won't be expecting.
We could continue it to August 12th.
Well, we're not scheduled for a meeting then.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's when you had a meeting.
We are?
Yeah, August 12th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
My eyes aren't working properly. Okay. So the 26th, the 12th, we'll continue it to. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. But you have the sense of the board. Yes, sir? Yeah, you can ask a question still. We haven't closed the, well.
I just get this three lot division. You've got a cul-de-sac, but then there's going to have to be a one really long driveway to get out to lot three.
Yeah.
The cul-de-sac, the way the original drawing is, is actually safer than having a really long driveway to five, because there's no access to lot three out here. I don't believe.
But sir, that's what we.
No access at all except from the cul-de-sac.
That's what we were just talking about, sir. If they do a PRD, then the back part, we can have smaller lots.
Yeah.
And the back part of it can be conservation. And so you wouldn't have that long driveway extending all the way back to that far lot.
And I would still have the same concern with that house up the first lot, one, again, is right on the line.
Mm-hmm.
So we have some setbacks on that one. The same issues with this, as I have with the, with the original plan from a safety standpoint.
Well, we've given them, we've given them the sense of the board.
I think once, if we say.
And that gives them something to work with, and we'll see what happens then.
I just wanted to point that out.
Well, I understand that, yes. That's, that's why when Jed said, do we want them to continue with the PRD?
Madam Vice Chair, if I may, without cutting you off, may I offer a potential compromise?
Of course.
Considering the public brought up the four lot situation. So in the planned residential development bylaw, there is a provision that would allow for density bullets. If that open space is characterized as significant, connected to the other town land, that the applicant would donate it, that open space to a third party or a land trust, would you be open to the applicant looking into that and potentially getting a, an additional lot to go to the four and still maintaining that open space protection for that wildlife habitat in the back of the property? Would the board be? Would the board be open to that?
Charlotte? We've taken a sense of the board. We know where we are now. If we decide we're not going to do an official vote, then it's open for everybody doing more thinking. And who knows what actually would result from that.
Jim?
I actually think the planned unit development is the strongest tool we've ever had for saving open space in this town. And to say that we don't want to do it now is like reversing what we've been doing for the last 20 years. I, we got off in the wrong direction in this thing. I think we should just focus on the length of the street and if we want to compromise for, but to say we don't like the, the, the planned development, the open space, it's the wonderful best tool we've ever had. Look at some of the neighbors we've, we've created. We built smaller streets, don't waste on pavement and have lots kind of open space. I thought it was the greatest tool we ever had and now we're trashing it because we don't like it. We want to use it to control the number of lots. We got off in the wrong direction on this thing and I, I just want to point out to everybody, we, look at some of the beautiful planned unit developments we've done. They're not bad, they're great. And it's the best tool we had and now we're trashing it. So something happened here and I'm disappointed.
Okay. So, all finished? Okay. Continued to the 12th of August.
Continued to the 12th of August. We'll work with the applicant to get that extension agreement. In the meantime, would you be okay with us drafting a decision for you that has recommendations? Because that will be your final action on the, you know, presumably the 12th. You'll approve the plan as presented and with some recommendations for the future definitive.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and draft that.
Sound good? Okay. Thank you.
It's a good solution.
Thank you for your time.
Of course. Thank you for all your efforts.
More to come.
Good. Now John can come back in.
Yeah. Inconclusively finished.
The meeting is over. That was done. They didn't, not yet.
How you doing?
Thank you.
I haven't heard anything yet, so thank you for asking. They know I'm in a meeting, so I may not even get a text letting any know what's going on at this point, but.
Okay, good.
I expect they still don't know what's possible. We'll see.
All right, thank you. We're going to move forward with the next hearing.
Since you came up against the.
Tom, you're going to read it? Please?
That's actually not until the special permit. Sorry. So we're doing the site plan review part first. So there's two applications for this, for this property coming up. And the first, we're doing the site plan review, which is being continued. The second one will be the special permit, which then the public hearing notice can be read.
All right, so first, we'll do the site plan review. Thank you. For the applicant, please.
Hi, my name is Rafael Sitajin. It's 683 Main Street.
Hi, welcome.
So, um, as was asked last time, we are creating like a little green area here. We have like a big tree over here, but we're cutting the asphalt and putting more greens to the trees, things like that. So and then we changed the layouts of the parking space as well. Before they were like here in the front, we put on the sides, we put four over here and then we moved two to this area. And then this one back here was initially here, so we moved over here so we could get like a fire truck and do the turn here and park, or park in the back if needed to. So and then back here on the side here, we're going to plant a lot of more trees to get more greeny. Those are the main chains that were asked. And then also like the front over here, because the fire truck has to do like 30, 33, 34, has to be a 34-feet-wide entrance. So that's pretty much what we have here right now. I think we have like about 36, 37-feet-wide entrance.
How wide, please?
I'm sorry?
How wide entrance?
So it's 36, 37.
That's what's going to be after the landscaping.
No, that's what we have right now. So I was talking to the, to the surveyor, to the engineer, and then for fire trucks, they need at least 33 feet wide.
33 feet wide?
Yeah, so to do the, to do the turns from both ways. So it's pretty much what we have there right now.
Okay. Anything else?
I guess this is the, oh, and then we ended up adding like a few exterior lights, more lights as well. I believe those are the main chains the board asked last time. Can I ask more questions if you guys have?
Are we still waiting for engineering? Are we all set?
So, thank you. The plan that you're looking at on the screen was recently revised, I believe on the 14th of July. So the engineering division has not had a chance to review that plan.
Okay.
It was simply showed you to show the changes since the last meeting. They, engineering division also needs to review the drainage calculations as well. So this is still, still in their, on their desk.
Okay. And the applicant's saying that the, the fire department's asking for 33 feet open at the entrance?
So.
Are you familiar with that?
I am. So I spoke to the fire department last week regarding the entrance and the size. They, they did express that they could make it work with 24 feet wide. However, the existing curb cut would only benefit them considering the fact that there's parking right as you pull into the site. So the more space they have to maneuver into the parking lot, the better. But again, you know, 24 feet, if you ultimately required it, could be doable, it's just a little tighter.
Probably especially, especially with a bunch of cars parked in there, right?
And just for the record, the referral is in your packet and it does indicate that the curb cut would be adequate for fire apparatus.
Okay. All right, if you have any questions, start with Charlotte. Do you have any questions?
Could you, we had asked for a landscape plan.
I'm sorry?
We asked for a landscaping plan and I think I'm looking at that.
Yeah, so the, the landscape is like the, the one we put over here, which is on the same as the, the site plan. We're going to open like the entire front here and then ended up adding like a bunch of trees to the side.
So you've added a strip of, of planting all along the long side.
Yes.
On the west side and a small planting area right at the front.
Yeah, that looks small in the picture, but it's going to end up being a little big by, I believe, 10 feet, between 10 and 15 feet by five-ish.
And it appears that with the wide curb cut, people would come in and they're going to park head in to the, the long border of planting. They won't park head into the building, but head into the landscape planting. Is that right?
That's what was asked with last meeting because the parking before was here.
Right. So you're moving it.
So you guys asked to move over this way because on this lot here on the side, the parks are over this way as well. That's where.
So you did that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to be sure I'm reading this right.
Yeah. That's what you guys asked for, to move the parking spots to that side.
Yeah.
Good.
Um, I wish there were more landscaping, but I can see they've made an effort to do that. And I, I can see where backing and hauling with the cars might make it difficult to make that front piece bigger.
Think of as far as landscaping goes?
Yeah.
On the west side?
Well, because we're not, the, the building's not changing, so it's really the aspect from the street. We're trying to make it more nearly residential looking.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you've made an effort toward that and you changed the parking as we had asked.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Yeah, I'm good.
Jim?
Well, I used to require that the open space be shown as green. It's a lot easier to see, it's confusing. I think we should probably continue to do that so the public understands what we're talking about. I, this, on, right now, it looks like the whole thing could be paved. You really can't tell. And I think that if I understand the dotted line, that's the new landscaping plan, that should be green space. They could have just colored it in with a pencil, it would be better presentation and that's, if I was making the decision, I'd require that. But I like the plan, it's just the presentation that I'm talking about.
You understand what he's asking for?
Again, it's my first time having a.
No, I understand.
Ordinating, so.
No, it's a good try.
They're probably going to come back and visit us again, so maybe when you come back next time, we have a little colored-in plan, site plan.
I'll try my best.
I like it. I think all of our concerns were answered. Thank you.
Okay. I'm in agreement with Pat. Okay, so I had a little discussion today with the town planner on the west side where you've come out. It looks like five feet with the landscaping.
Uh, where is that?
Face the building on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Out by the, out by the street.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got parking that's going to come out 16 feet right behind the landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering if you could bring the landscaping to the entrance to the 16-feet mark and what would that leave us for an opening? Jed, did we, did we make a determination on that? Would that make it to 24 feet?
It would likely go past it. So I believe their opening is 36 feet if they extended, you know, if they ate up 16 feet of that, obviously they'd have the 20.
Okay.
But you could do just shy of that to maintain a 24-foot opening if that's, if that's what you're looking for.
Well, my, my concern was the fire department's looking for a turnaround, but we've got parking right there next to the landscaping in the front. And I don't know if it's going to make that much of a difference for the entrance of the fire engine.
Yeah.
Or the exit. But, uh, because I would like to see more landscaping out on the street. That's my personal opinion, but everyone, everyone else seems to be good with it, so. All right. Was there anything else we need to address on this except for the?
We haven't seen the engineering, right?
Right.
What I'd like to caution, I, I've managed and run a lot of properties up and down Main Street. There's a tremendous sheet flow problem when it rains, that we've approved too much paving in the past and it just runs from one property to the other. We, they should be required to, that it's engineered that all the water stays on the site. There is no, they need, their engineer needs to say that.
Yes. Yep. The calculations that they've provided in all of the drainage mitigation.
Okay. That has to be made clear because we heard comments tonight and other things, so people are worried about runoff. You can't. When they do a subdivision, the engineer's swearing, this won't happen.
Space on.
And that, I, I think that needs to be made a little clearer. I don't, I don't see any drainage along the east side at all. Is there, is there even a drainage plan?
There is. So.
So I, it is, I'm, I'm looking for something, would not be shown.
Yeah. So the drainage map and all the calculations have been sent to the engineering division.
Okay.
And it's also.
I'll wait till the engineers review it. I'd like to see their view.
As you know, that site is really flat.
I know, but it, it's, it, it's a problem on the street.
For sure. For sure.
I know the site's flat, yes. I'm aware of that.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, John, why, why is it staying paved when no cars are going to be driving down the, the, I think that's the west side of the building? Why does that stay paved?
I'm not sure what you're talking about. Here. Oh, adjacent to, right in that area there?
Yeah, it, it seems to be marked that it's going to be pavement, still pavement, but it doesn't need to be.
Uh, where in this area here?
Yes, that area there.
So this is, uh, this is the window wells to the basement unit where that has the grass. So usually it's better having like hard surface to go out in case of emergency than just like tripping on grass or plants or stuff like that. And then our drainage is going to be all over through here and then we're going to have two big tanks back here. That's the drainage floor.
It could be gravel.
It could be gravel. I think we, we'll come back to next time. If you could have it colored in green where the landscape is going to go, please?
Okay.
So we can have a little bit better discussion on that.
All right.
John? Thank you. You mentioned that you, you wanted more landscaping. What did you have in mind? I just want the plan colored in so we can see it. A little bit earlier, about, about five minutes ago, you said we're all set, but you wanted to see more. What were you, what were you thinking? At the entryway? Yeah. I wanted to, I was, maybe we should discuss that. Thinking about having it come out equal to the, the depth of the parking spot, parking space, but it would make it too narrow for the fire department. Okay. So.
Yeah, just for clarity's sake, if you were to come out equal to the end of the parking spot, yes, it would likely make it too narrow for your bylaw. But if you're looking to have the applicant extend that landscape buffer to be compliant with the bylaw to allow for 24 feet, then you can have that discussion with the applicant if that's something you want to do.
Well, that's, that's why I like to see a plan colored in a little bit and we can, I think we'll have a better look at it at that point.
Okay.
Be easier to make some sort of a suggestion or a decision on.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are we, are we asking for a draft decision?
Do we have to wait for the engineering and?
Anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would suggest that you, you know, it seems like the only outstanding item might be that landscaping area in the buffer or in the, in the front of the site. Are there any other concerns?
Well, along the, along the side of the building.
I agree with Charlotte on the side too. I mean, actually, I thought it was going to be, I couldn't tell because it's not shown in green or, I was confused by the plan.
Well, it says pavement.
I know.
Yeah.
Looking at it now, I see that.
Yeah, but it's hard to see.
But you're okay with the dumpster location, the parking, where it's located?
Yeah.
Lighting that's proposed on the exterior of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah. They got an enclosure in the dumpster that's not on the property line, it's not jamming up against the neighbor they need it, it's considerate. You know, that's, where else can it go?
Yeah, there's limited options. Okay. I just want to try to give the applicant a sense for outstanding items.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's a great project.
How many more units is this? I'm.
Four. Well, so there's two, there were two before, they're increasing to five.
So we're, this, by doing this, they're getting three more units?
Correct.
That's, that's the important thing to focus on.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is really great.
And I believe the testimony at the last meeting was that the basement apartment was going to be the affordable unit?
Yes.
Do you happen to know what you're projecting for your rents for that unit?
For that unit? So we're checking that somewhere around 18 to 2,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it a one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
Two-bedrooms. The only two bedrooms is in the basement.
Okay.
It's a bigger unit, it's about close to 1,000 square feet.
And under Mr. Carr, what, what's the requirement?
25%.
So that would only be 20%. Close, huh? Close, huh?
It's close. If you want to require a second one, you have the ability to do that.
Okay.
It's up to the board.
Is the project still feasible at that point?
You don't have to ask the applicant.
Oh, really? I mean, we, we've been stuck with this project for like six months now without having
Right.
Not doing anything, so every month
It's worse.
A bunch of cash is going to the train without having
The approvals, right.
The ability of doing what we're proposing to do, even though we have by rights, we can do what we're trying to do.
Right.
Okay. Everybody all set with that part?
Yeah.
So we'll continue this.
Anything we can do to help move it along would be
Yeah, I would suggest that you continue the site plan review to the 12th of August. Then, of course, you're gonna be opening a special permit hearing in just a few seconds, um, but we'll go to that.
Okay, so we're call, we're not gonna close. We'll continue this hearing.
Right.
And then, Tom, will you read the special permit, please?
Yep, with the notice, yep. Public notice for this project was published on June 27th, 2025, and July 4th, 2025. And 28 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to summarize the reason? So this special permit is required for two reasons. One, for parking within the front yard and within five feet of a property line. So that is, uh, section 240, 14.1, I, 5B, I believe. And then, uh, in addition to that, um, the Mr. Cod bylaw allows for a non-conforming front yard setback to be applied for via special permit. So in the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, your bylaw says it can be no more than 25 feet, the front yard setback. This structure is approximately 48 feet setback. It's pre-existing, as you know. So this special permit, um, would allow for the building to essentially remain in its place.
So you wouldn't have to move it forward?
Correct.
What if we'd like to see it moved forward?
Well, that becomes a conversation.
That's far a discussion, right?
Yes, it does. And it opens up the landscaping opportunities.
That would
And the parking.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So does he need to make any presentation to this, or?
I mean, I think the plan speaks for itself.
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna make any other comments on the plan?
Unless you guys have any more questions.
Okay. I'm gonna start down here. Tom, you have any, any, uh, questions or comments?
I'm fine with it.
Fine. Jim?
I think it's important to, we address this as a pre-existing building. We don't really wanna rebuild the whole town. This, this gets us a lot of what we want. And I think to make them conform to, would, would kill the project, and we don't need to kill the project. I'd like to see it go forward, and I, I like the idea.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good use of an existing piece of property. And I see why we should hinder it.
Good. Same, Sean?
Same.
Okay, great. So I think that we're all in support of that. So do we need a, a motion?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Keep it down up there.
Seems to be all set with it.
Motion to close the hearing.
Okay, motion to close the hearing.
I move that this hearing, the special permit hearing be closed.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous.
Great. So what we can do is, if you, if you're so inclined, we can draft a positive motion for the special permit. We're allowing that parking and the front yard setback. We can also draft for you a very draft, positive decision or motion for the site plan review. And in the meantime, uh, have a conversation with the applicant about potentially adding some landscaping out in that front area that would still allow for a 24-foot opening at the curb.
Yeah, let's do that.
Sound good?
Perfect.
All right. Um, continue to August 12th.
Yeah.
That work for the applicant?
August 12th?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll see you on the 12th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Get a chance to put a little, put a little green on here and get it back to, it'd be much appreciated.
I'm glad.
Okay. All right. So next on our agenda is planning board discussion. And are you going to, to leave?
Yeah, I think I will. Her finger is broken.
Oh, boy.
Yep.
So they're trying to decide whether she has to go to Boston.
Okay. Hope it works out well.
I hope so. My sister, she fell and broke a femur a few hours ago.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. So I'm excusing myself right now so I can be there for her. Thank you all.
Okay, is there a shirt also?
Of course it is. I'm gonna leave it. I'm frazzled. I'm gonna leave my glasses case, too. Nah, I just need my glasses case over here. Back there. Thank you.
Okay, Pat?
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna discuss the potential November, um, meeting articles?
Yes, sir. So, um, we'll start and we'll go in order of the bylaw numerically. Um, try to keep things simple. So we've got a total of five potential planning, um, zoning amendments. The first is, um, amending section 240, 5.1C. It is your prohibited uses and special permit allowances section. Essentially, what that section says is anything that's not listed in your use tables, which is all of article, um, or section 240, 6.1 through 6.7. Anything that listed in those tables is a prohibited use. The next clause indicates that you can, an applicant can go to the ZBA, ask for a special permit for a use that's similar to something that is not included in the use table, provided that it's, uh, that it, and I'll quote, closely resembles in its neighborhood impacts a use allowed by right or by special permit in that zoning district. So essentially, in layman's terms, we say, if it's not listed here, it's prohibited. But then, we also say, however, you can go seek a special permit for something that's not listed and prohibited if it closely resembles something that is prohibited because it's not listed.
That's, that's what it currently says.
That's what it currently says.
It says both.
Correct. So we see that as problematic, and we're suggesting that we get rid of that second clause that says you can go seek relief. Anything that's not listed in your zoning bylaw and your use tables is essentially prohibited.
So we're trying to simplify it.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the first one.
Well, yes, we're trying to simplify it, but you're also taking total flexibility out of it. Because it could have been a mistake, or, uh, people weren't considering it, a change. Things change all the time. The world's not the same as the way you write. The zoning uses are different. And now we're gonna be tied to language that they came up with whenever they did, as opposed to have more flexibility. I actually would like to have more discussion on that. I like, I like the alternative, not, because when was the bylaw written?
Originally, or that's
That language written.
That's a good question. I mean, if you want, I can look
I'm just saying, the world's different now.
100%.
Okay? And we might wanna have more flexibility.
It's interesting you say that. Um, so, and I should start off the conversation with, this is simply just a discussion about potential amendments.
When does the warrant close, too? We have some time, right? Is it the end of August?
Yeah.
So we have time for discussion.
So we wouldn't, we would suggest that you open public hearings on the 12th at your next meeting. So this is just a discussion on, do you think that this is worthwhile having on the warrant? Or at least on your public hearing listing for discussion? So if you ultimately decide that, no, you're not comfortable with it, put it aside and we move on.
Leave them both there.
It's a fair point. Uh, okay, so the next one is the business district use table. So as you remember, uh, the Attorney General, when they approved our accessory dwelling unit bylaw, partially approved, I should say. They also indicated that we need to, to make amendments to this use table because we allow single-family dwellings in the business districts. And anywhere you allow single-family dwellings, you now must allow for an accessory dwelling unit. So this zoning amendment, as you can see, simply allows an accessory dwelling unit as an accessory use by right in the business districts, B1, B2, B3, and BR.
There has to be a primary dwelling on the law. It can't be accessory to a business.
Yeah. Good point.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna skip over the third one, 'cause that's a little bit, that's the most complicated. That's amendments to the accessory dwelling unit, so we'll come back to that in a second.
Okay.
The fourth one, or the next one, I should say, is amending the maximum building height table, which is 240, 11.5A. So as you can see on that table, it lists two overlay districts and specifies their maximum building height. Currently, the accident prevention overlay district is 35 feet, and it includes accessory structures. The search and rescue overlay district, it currently listed as 100 feet, and it includes accessory structures. We see that as very confusing language, indicating that potentially within that overlay district, you could have structures up to 100 feet.
An emergency.
Right. That is not the intent of that set, that overlay district. That overlay district is for search and rescue flights, you know, to and from Camp Edwards. So what we are proposing is simply to just remove it from this table to reduce that confusion, 'cause we've had questions about that. It remains within the overlay district language, so it doesn't get removed from the bylaw. It's just simply removed from this table.
I have, I have a question about it.
Yeah.
Um, the 100 feet would say that you can't put up 100, a cell tower.
So, yeah.
Many cell towers go up over 100 feet, 120, 150 is common for cell towers.
Right.
What does this allow?
Well, that's just it. So if you're looking at the, at the table itself, that's an open question. And someone could say, well, it says that you allow 100-foot structures in the accident or the search and rescue overlay district, when in fact, we don't.
What do you allow?
We don't allow structures to be up to 100 feet. We, we allow 35 feet.
Only in the search and rescue?
So the search and rescue overlay district essentially says you can't have anything over 100 feet. And it's meant to relate to cell towers, those types of things.
Well, it's interesting, because that goes over the, the Archdiocese property in North Falmouth, the search and rescue. So this would seem to preclude a cell tower within that.
Well, again, we're not talking about that case. What we're just talking about is the use
But it does.
Okay. The table itself has confusing language. All we're looking to do is clean that up, so it doesn't create confusion. We can talk offline about that particular issue that you're bringing up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, last but, not quite last but, not least, but the, uh, next one is 240, 11.5B, accessory structures. So this language is being eliminated, as you can see on the red stripe through, uh, because it conflicts directly with the Attorney General's, or I should say, the Affordable Homes Act, which, um, this provision does not allow for an accessory apartment applicant to exceed 22 feet, which is the allowable height for an accessory structure, on a property over two acres. So there's a special permit allowance if someone were to do an accessory apartment or accessory dwelling unit on a property over two acres. They could get a special permit to go up to 25 feet. We're simply removing this language because it prohibits accessory dwelling units in that case, and that conflicts directly with the Affordable Homes Act. So that's why we're, we're eliminating that language. And then, lastly, is amendments to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So we're doing this for two reasons. First and foremost is based on the, uh, guidance that we received from the Attorney General when they gave us, so this is a very long red, the Attorney General's guidance when they approved our, partially approved our accessory dwelling unit zoning amendment. And because the Executive Office of Housing in Living Communities released not only regulations that deal with, uh, ADUs in the Commonwealth, but also a model zoning bylaw. So we took a lot of that helpful language and we inserted it into ours. What's important to point out here, and we can talk about this, um, in more detail at the public hearing, if, if you're so inclined, is the fact that we've removed the option, for now, to seek more than one ADU on a property through a special permit. And the reason we did that was simply because we need to, or the board, needs to come up with regulations or rules related to how you wanna handle, or if you wanna handle, multiple ADUs on a property. So the first ADU, and I'm gonna go through this in a second in, in the PowerPoint. The first ADU is considered a protected use, right? It's a by-right use. You cannot restrict, um, a lot of components about a protected use ADU. It's essentially out of your hands. The second ADU, and third, and fourth, and fifth, and so on and so forth, those are all considered local ADUs. That's where you have more control over the size, um, the height. You've got all sorts of controls that you can, um, bring back. We just don't know what those are yet, and we wanna have a thoughtful conversation with you about what you are thinking about that. And so that, for that reason, we took out that language that allows multiple ADUs, 'cause I don't feel like we're ready for that yet. Um, but again, if you disagree, we can, you know, move forward, but I think it's important we have a, a conversation about that first. So
I would, I would comment on, on that, just an understanding. Like, now, we've, we've said in the business district, if you have single-family, how many single-family homes can you have in a business district?
Well, um, I, I couldn't tell you, 'cause
Well, is it eight or six? So it's a, it's a, it's a bigger number.
You're talking about multi-family use?
No. See, they could be single-family dwellings on, on a business district.
Yeah.
Are they all entitled to an ADU?
Yes.
Automatically?
Yes.
So there's, that's the point. So we could have six ADUs and six single-family homes on a business district. Just wanted to make sure that was
The Affordable Homes Act has really changed
I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that that's, that's what we're saying. I don't know if you've all thought that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I, I kinda thought that's what it was, and you've clarified it. That's all.
And again, that
I'm not planning to do it anywhere. I just want to know. I've had this discussion. This is a big change.
Yeah. That's, that's exactly why we decided to pull back on this whole special permit idea until we have a really thoughtful conversation about what that means. Because it could go out of control very quickly. Yeah. And so we wanna make sure that there's appropriate guardrails in place.
What happened?
So Melinda's got a PowerPoint presentation that she put together.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna stall for time, so she opens it up. It essentially goes through the rules related to how things have changed since the Affordable Homes Act, as it relates to ADUs in particular. Hit that five.
Thanks. Okay, so as Jed just said, um, there is a big difference between, um, how we used to, um, approve accessory dwelling units and now how we are looking at, um, um, I can't think, ADUs, um, accessory dwelling units as a result of what the state has come forward with through the Affordable Homes Act. So this slideshow kinda guides you through the process. So first, we're talking about what is a protected use ADU. Jed went over it briefly, um, just briefly before. But ultimately, a protected ADU is an ADU that is allowed by right in zoning districts that permit single-family homes. And there's a size limit, 900 square feet or half the gross, um, floor area, whichever is smaller. And you can't, the municipalities are not allowed to impose certain restrictions, such as owner occupancy, parking minimums, near transit, occupancy restrictions, such as, um, you know, students or unrelated persons. Before, I think at one point, we had it that it had to be a family member way back in the day. Um, no unit caps, density limits, um, and no special permits for this one protected use ADU. Also, that comes along with it are design standards that the state has set forward, and that is not, it's considered unreasonable if your design standards don't apply to single-family homes, how they generally do. And also, they're considered unreasonable if they're restrictive or excessive in burdened some, that they prohibit the use, the building of the ADU or increases the cost. So that's why, where we say that the design guidelines are kind of restricted in your, in your purview now, um, because of these guidelines right here. If, if we do more local ADUs after the protected use ADU, then you can get into all of that, um, the design guidelines and the screening and the landscaping and everything. Yep.
But, but I would say that, uh, there are a lot of restrictions already with, with the septic design and all that. There's restrictions
Those still stay in place because that's bylaws.
Right, right, but that is
We're talking about just design
I, I know, but that, but that is a restriction on somebody building a home.
Right.
And I don't look at, um, design or, uh, site plan as an additional burden on somebody
That's what this says.
I, I, I know. That, that they're trying to take that away from us. And I got, I'm arguing that, uh, if it, if it doesn't come through the planning department, it should be a referral from the building commissioner, like, uh, every other referral that comes, uh, for any building permit that has to be pulled.
Well, that's what it would be. We, we already do referrals for the building department, and we would continue to do them for accessory dwelling units.
Right.
If they weren't before.
He's saying something different from that.
But I'm saying that we should be able to still have a referral based on how the building looks and, and the site plan.
You, you're not allowed to. You wouldn't do that with a single-family home. We don't do that for single-family homes. When a person builds a single-family home on their house, we don't have any design say over it. There's still design guidelines for like setbacks and everything, if that's what you're talking about, like, where the design of the building, the, the size
How do HMOs get away with it?
What are you talking about?
A home, homeowners association, HOA, rather.
For what, though? What are you specific?
For, for design, for landscaping, all that.
The private covenants.
Yeah.
Right.
They're not public.
They have their own association.
They go away in 20 years.
They have their own association that governs their neighborhood. They have their own association that governs their neighborhood.
What he's asking is, does that supersede-- which supersedes, the HOA or what the state guidelines are?
That's a good question. They haven't spoken to that. I'm assuming that if you're going to build an ADU, that's up to the homeowners' association. They might even-- I don't know if they can even prohibit it.
Yeah, I can't see a situation, although I'm not an attorney, I can't see a situation where a homeowners' association could essentially supersede state law.
Well, maybe you can ask the town council at some point. It's a good point, Bob.
The way this is worded, we don't approve anything to do with single-family. This is considered a state where some towns, they do. So, it says, if you don't have rules about what people can build, then nothing can apply.
We could have rules.
But we don't, but some towns do. I just-- this is a misfit, I think.
We have rules for a number of bedrooms.
But not things that the planning board does.
No, you're absolutely right.
The planning board has no say on a single-family home--
Right.
On the design, the outlook, the landscaping. And so, because of that word "if," now we have no say on ADUs either, on the design, landscaping, parking, screening, just because of that word "if."
I think that's what she just said.
I know. I just wanted to point out. I'm sure everybody--
No, I understand. I'm trying to get a workaround for it. I know what that says, and I am totally against that.
Okay.
I'm looking for a workaround--
I wasn't sure--
So, that we don't have double wides dropped on people's property.
I'm with you. I was just making sure--
Just Falmouth does have character. As a planning board member, when I first joined this, I vowed to maintain the character of this town to the best of my ability, because it matters in this town.
We've got a problem right there.
Yeah.
Right here in River City.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a lot of control there. Go ahead.
No, it's serious. I mean, this is a big point.
I understand, but you're just reiterating--
So, I just hope everyone understands that it's not Jed and I putting this forward. We're just showing you what the state has put forward and what we have to abide by.
Whether we like it or not.
Correct.
I think we need to keep in mind that this has happened now. We can react later. If we want to have controls over single-family design and so forth, we could try for that.
Yeah.
In the meantime, what this is saying is, we don't have controls over that because there was respect for the notion of private property. This is yours. You paid for it. You can do what you want, ugly or not. But what we rely on, really, is people's taste and how much they want to protect their investment in their particular house.
Right.
And if you look around town, most people don't really want to risk it by putting a double wide there. That's not what they're going to do. So, this is asking us to have--
I got one next to my house.
Oh, no.
Yeah. So, you know.
Are they allowed to do that?
Well, no. It was the design.
Oh.
It looks like a double wide.
But didn't that come before here?
It came before. Yeah, it was the very first one. I had to recuse myself, and I sent letters with 30 photographs and everything else against that.
So, the board still had say over it, and it still ended up being you didn't like it?
The board still had say over it.
So, I'm just saying that just--
Yeah.
Anyways, I'm going to go on to the next slide.
We don't have a front yard--
So, this is a comparison of a protected ADU, protected use ADU, and the previously-- the previous accessory apartment bylaw. So, these are your jurisdiction points now. It's just size, parking, and height. Before, you had location, lot size, architectural design in effect, height, landscape, screening, number of bedrooms. Whether it was in a coastal pond or water resource protection district, there were certain restrictions, and there was an owner occupancy before. So, as you can see, it is a lot smaller of what you're looking at. And I'd just like to show on the next slide the time and the cost of an applicant if they were doing a protected use just by right through a building permit compared to if they were still to go through the site plan review process. So, if it was just through the building permit, there would be approximately a two-week review by the building department, and that would include planning being involved, making sure that the parking and the size requirements met the guidelines. And then, the cost is just the cost of the building permit fee, whatever the construction size is. It's a certain amount of dollar per square footage. And then, you can see in the other column that the-- if the applicant had to still go through the site plan review process, the cost is about $300 plus the building permit fee, and the timeframe is two to three and a half months as compared to two weeks. So, there's a significant time difference between the two, and the cost is a little bit greater. And you can see the things that the cost applies to, which is the fee and reprographics and a butter notifications and all of that things. So, it's up to you to decide or to think about which way you guys want to proceed with this, if you would like it to just be a building permit with our, Jed and I's review so that the timeline is more streamlined for them, and we're still looking at the same things that we have our purview, our jurisdiction over, those three things, size, height, and what's the other one?
Go on there quick.
Parking. And then, or if you still would like it to go through the site plan review process and only look at size, parking, and height, not all these other things.
And that's something we'll discuss and make a decision on future meeting. I really would like for Pat to be here.
Okay.
Yeah, so technically, it will be part of your public hearing. So, when you open it up and you discuss it--
Okay.
Currently, the draft that's before you tonight is just a building permit with the building commissioner.
And no notice to abutters.
Correct.
Correct.
It just happens.
Just happens.
Like with a regular--
Yeah, like a house.
Yep.
Treat it just like a house.
Yep.
Now, that's just for the one protected use ADU.
Right, the one.
Does the state disallow notice to the abutters? They don't specifically disallow it in the legislation.
So, that's a comp-- it's not a complicated question, but they don't necessarily disallow. They do offer the option for communities who want to maintain site plan review for protected use ADUs. You technically can maintain a site plan review process. Now, I will tell you, and that would involve notice to abutters, obviously, but that would require a decent amount of work on our end to adjust the site plan review requirements. We would also have to adjust the site plan review regulations that you have in place because we have to essentially take your site plan review process, which is, let's say, this big, and whittle it down to this big, because the only three things that you can consider are height, parking, and--
Size.
Size.
So, ultimately, we would be writing a special site plan review bylaw for protected use accessory dwelling units. Sorry. So, that's a lot of work just for those three items.
Wouldn't basically be stripping out anything that is disallowed and leaving the rest? So, it's sort of like a white-out operation?
It would be, yes, to a certain degree, but, you know, we haven't visited those in some time, so it's possible that we may have to add some new language. But yes, essentially, you're just whittling out things. The real question for the board is think-- and I completely understand. Just think about it from the applicant's side. For a protected use ADU, the state has tried to make it as clear as possible that those types of developments are-- should be shepherded through the process quicker than coming through site plan review. The goal is to be able to produce those housing units. We have not come across ADUs in the past, a couple of exceptions that have been particularly challenging. They've all met the requirements through site plan review. In fact, a lot of the time that we spend with them is simply just helping the homeowner understand the rules around the size. But nine times out of 10, they sail right through the process. So, it's my opinion specifically, and I think Melinda shares this opinion, that we are creating an extra step for an applicant of a protected use that, in my opinion, is just not necessary. Local ADUs, anything past the one? Absolutely, you should have control of that.
John? I don't know that we're creating an extra step. I think maybe we would be looking at a transition from a change, one house on one lot, to one plus, to two houses on one lot. That's a very big change for this town to absorb, I think, and a very big change for neighborhoods to absorb, about which they would get no opportunity to comment. And I think it might be better to have a step down, where you do just strip out the things we can't do anymore, but still have it come here, notify the abutters, and we can take a look at it, just to see how it's going to go.
Yeah, and I hear you. I just want to remind you that the only three things that those abutters can comment on are the size, the parking, and the height.
We can speak to them and say that. People understand that.
So, that's going to add potentially two to three months to the applicant's process, just for them, for you to discuss items that they're going to meet most likely anyway.
And that are written within the code, so they can't-- they cannot exceed those items. So, essentially, what we're telling you--
And I'm sure you would screen the ones that aren't right before they get here, just as you do now.
Which we would still do in the building department.
And the difference would be, we would see it, we would see how it's going, and the abutters would see what's happening in their neighborhood.
Yes, that is the main difference. Yes.
What if--
I think that's a good difference.
What if we came up with some criteria for the building commissioner to guide his decision?
Well, we would be the ones guiding him, Jed and I.
So, we're still talking about the planning department--
Oh, yes.
--being involved in this.
It's the same as what we do for you guys. When we present it to you, we have--
Okay, because I thought it was just people were just going to go downstairs to the building department--
Nope.
Pull a permit.
So, there's checklist on the building permit application, there's checklist for each department, and until we sign off on it, they don't get their building permit.
Okay.
Yep.
So, we're a sign off.
Guys, but who knows who's next?
Who says we're leaving?
What you're asking, what you're suggesting is, they go through this process so the neighbors are aware it's going to happen, or could happen. That's really the only difference.
It really-- and I think it's a big difference for the town, because it's a huge thing to suddenly say you can have two houses on every lot in town.
I would just hate for a neighbor to come in and think that they-- that whatever they have to say can affect or amend what's going to happen ultimately, because no matter what a neighbor says, this is still going to happen, as long as it fits the size, the height, and the parking, because it's a by right use.
That's right.
And you're going to make sure that they meet those three criteria?
Of course, yeah. We do now, and we would still continue to do that.
So, this is just for discussion this evening?
Correct.
Other thing I wanted to check, I went through this. I could actually open this, and I could open your presentation also and check to be sure for what it said about short-term rentals.
Yes.
And we're allowed to do that? We can forbid them in ADUs?
Yes.
By right, ADUs, no short-term rentals.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, that's an important point that I missed earlier. Thank you for bringing that up.
What if you'd like to have them?
You can allow that--
Okay.
If you'd like.
Can they do short-term rentals in the primary house and live in the ADU?
Say that one more time.
Can they do all the short-term rentals in the primary house and live permanently--
No, it says in neither.
Did it say neither?
So, technically, in your-- yeah, in your current draft, the answer is no.
Okay. That's good. I was just--
That's an excellent part of the draft.
Bob, any other comments?
Uh, no, not now.
Okay, Jim? Pat? No, Pat's good. Okay.
Okay, so, we need to advertise the public hearing tomorrow in the-- to the enterprise. Are you comfortable with all of these proposed articles going forward for a public hearing? Or would you like to hold one of them or any of them?
Do we need to vote, or we're just good?
You can just let me know.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should have them all for public hearing.
Okay.
I agree.
Jim?
Doesn't sound like we can do much about it.
You can. You have the ability.
Not this one.
Don't need to be dressed.
Yeah, that's one way to get it out.
Are they all set, Paul?
Yeah.
Paul? Okay, great. Thank you.
Because, you know, believe it or not, there are some people who don't care what the property looks like, and things--
Well, we can see that around town.
Next, we'd like to have the planning department report.
Right.
Do you know, I was at your house. I didn't see--
So, some good news. We are--
Looks like a trailer.
You know, approaching the beginning of our new CP Fund, Community Preservation Fund administrator. She's going to be starting August 4th, so we're working hard to get everything ready for her to step into the job and take over, because community preservation committee applications are due for fiscal '26, August 6th. So, right after she starts, she'll be right in it with new applications. So, I've been working really hard to get all that ready so that she can hit the ground running.
Who is being?
Her name is Emily Webb. It's our new CP Fund administrator. She'll be starting--
She's not currently employed by the town.
That's-- well, she has accepted the offer, but her official start date is August 4th.
What is the job description, please?
So, she maintains or administers, or is the administrative, is held for the Community Preservation Committee. So, looks through all the applications that are received on a, you know, biannual basis, oversees the projects that receive funding, works with the applicants to secure invoicing and process payments. So, it's an administrative role for that committee.
Is it a full-time position?
It is part-time, 19 hours a week.
Okay.
So, secondly, and importantly, included on the desk is a public meeting notice. Kim and I will be at the Senior Center tomorrow night, Wednesday night, from 6:00 to 7:30. This is in relation to the RFPs that we've put together, or the town has put together for the disposition of town-owned land for affordable housing. So, those sites include Zero Locust Field Road, Zero West Falmouth Highway. So, Locust Field Road is just north of the high school, just south of the solar installation that I think it was Borrego and Lawrence Lynch up on Locust Field. Zero West Falmouth Highway is just off of the 28 Limited Access Highway, so it's right at the Siffelwist exit. So, as you make that curve, there's a triangle piece of land right there on the corner. And then, 20 Brigantine and 21 Pheasant. So, there are draft RFPs that we will have for the public tomorrow night. It's essentially an input session for the public to get acquainted with, you know, what this document says, and once we complete all of that, we'll report back to the select board and ultimately issue these RFPs so we can start building some affordable housing.
So, do you have this in a format that we can put on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Please?
Yeah.
I think I already sent this to Habitat.
And could you flash real quickly through the GIS?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
I mean, I kind of got what you said, but if you use the map, I really understand much.
So, for folks at home who are watching either tonight or after the fact, you simply go to the housing page under departments. Here is the public meeting notice. Again, this will be tomorrow night at the Senior Center from 6:00 to 7:30.
Can you make it larger?
Yeah, sure.
Please? There we go. Thank you.
Yep. And let's see. So, I will go through the individual parcels. So, Locust Field Road parcels, as I mentioned, this is the high school. Locust Field Road is these two here. So, altogether, these two parcels are approximately just about 6.2 acres. And again, the idea is to dispose of them for affordable housing, so the entire development would be 100% affordable housing units. Currently, the plan is to do just rental on this site, approximately 40 units, with a range of AMIs from 30% area median income up to 120% area median income. We have received some public comment about being more flexible with this site and potentially allowing rental and homeownership. So Kim and I have been working on some language that would allow for that. But again, tomorrow night is the public's opportunity to tell us what they think about that idea, as well as the rental.
Does it front on one street or two?
It just fronts on one, so Locust Field Road right here.
Any chance of connecting it to the sewer?
Uh, no. No. No, it is outside the sewer service area. Sewer service area is essentially the high school.
The high school, yeah.
And that's where it ends.
Right.
Yeah. So part of the RFP, and not to get too into the weeds, but part of the RFP is to require enhanced denatification for these, for all of these projects.
Because it's upstreaming from Long Pond.
Yep. So that's Locust Field. Let's see. West Falmouth Highway is right here. So it's these two triangles, or one triangle, one oddly-shaped parcel. So again, this is the Sipewissett exit ramp. And these two parcels...
So it busts the highway?
It does.
Wow.
It does. But there's a significant distance, as you can see. This site is no more than six units. We're looking at homeownership at this location. Again, just some town-owned land that we've been hanging on to for a long time.
Homeownership, all affordable?
All affordable, homeownership, yes. Yep. So those are the two identified by the town staff. So as you know, I went through with a lot of help from the other folks in planning, Melinda specifically. We went through an exhaustive effort looking at all of our town-owned properties, identifying future use for each one of them. These, West Falmouth and Locust Field, were our suggestions, and we brought to town meeting. Two petitioner articles were brought to town meeting, and those are the two properties that I'm about to show you. So I can never remember where Brigantine is.
That's further enough. Deep Pond, look for Deep Pond.
Deep Pond, I think, is...
Boxbury Hill Road.
That one? Yep. So, yeah, Boxbury Hill Road, yep. So this site, again, was a petitioner's article. This would be a homeownership 100% affordable. Currently, the range for affordable there for area median income is, I believe, anything up to 140%.
What's the size of the parcel?
That one in particular is under an acre, .68, .60 acres. So it's a small site. There's some challenges here with topography and some drainage adjustments, but, you know, it's possible to do a single-family home. And again, it would just be a single-family home on that site.
When you had the meeting, are you going to discuss what 140% is in dollar terms?
Yes.
For income for, is that a family of two, four, or...
It'd be a family of four. So adjusted for that, family of four.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then there's 21 Pheasant Lane. Now, I want to know better. I used to. So Pheasant Lane is here, off of Davisville Road. 21, again, this was a petitioner's article, vacant lot in the subdivision. And again, that would be very similar to Brigantine. It would be a single-family home, 100% affordable. We're not sure what that AMI range is currently because we're still trying to figure out the permitting. But once we figure that out, we can set the AMI range. Because the...
The town owns that parcel?
They do, yes.
So the notion is the town donates the land.
So ultimately, that will be up to the select board. But my understanding is, yes, they're open to the idea of essentially selling it for a dollar.
John?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Paul?
I'm a town meeting member. So I'm aware that it was approved for that property to be considered. There's a long history there.
Yes.
The property next door was a non-buildable lot. Somebody built on it, they're going to tear it down, and it was converted into affordable housing. The primary reason, I understand, was wastewater. Next door to that is the town-owned lot that we're talking about now. Has the same issue. How was that addressed, that it can be considered at this time?
So it's an excellent question. We're still working through the process for what the actual regulatory path would be. So the difference between issuing a building permit or going through a comprehensive permit application for that. So that's yet to be determined. We're hoping first thing in the morning for tomorrow so that we can inform the public tomorrow night. But in terms of wastewater, all of the sites that I just went through would be required to have a denatification septic system to protect the water quality nearby. So those are the four sites. And again, that's tomorrow night, 6:00 to 7:30 at the Senior Center.
Now, there's a lot more sites easier than just four you chose, right?
That's right.
Because there's a lot of, if you let up the green light and it show up all the town land, there's tons of it.
Yeah. So, yeah, we've gone through, like I said, we went through that process. We analyzed everything over two acres to start with. Locust Field and West Falmouth were some popular, and we'll call them low-hanging fruit, options. But there are some other sites. In fact, I presented to the select board other sites that can be... They're technically available for development, but there's some history there. And so we would need to work through a public process to figure out exactly what would occur there. One of those would be Webster Woods, Dunham Woods Hole. So that's a very large site, but, you know, obviously...
What was the name of that again, Chet, please?
Webster Woods.
Webster Woods.
Webster Woods, okay.
That would get things going if you thought that way.
Right. So, you know, we wanted to take it slow, be very cautious about it. But then, you know, open it up to the public and see what they thought about that.
Who's making the presentation tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night will be Kim Fish, the housing coordinator, and I.
Doesn't say on here who's making the presentation.
And again, it's meant to get the public's input and answer any questions.
It's a very encouraging step forward...
Yes, I agree.
...by the town and the planning department.
Is it going to be Zoom as well?
It is not.
No.
But it will be recorded by FCTV, so it'll be rebroadcasted afterwards.
Okay.
Yep. And let's see, so I'm...
No?
Okay, sorry. All right.
Have more planning report?
One more.
All right.
So at past meetings, you've asked to get an update on the dome project. I was able to make contact with the developer, and they've indicated that they have completed the construction, siding, and trimming... Trim work. On the addition to the dome. And that the next step is to address the cladding on the outside of the dome. And as you may know, they're hard at work at finalizing the rest of the development on that site. So our understanding is that they're currently working on it. There'll likely be future updates soon, but that's what we know to date, that they're working on the addition or they've completed the addition and working on the cladding.
When you brought it up last time, I volunteered to go out and fly it and submit a video when I did submit it to you.